You got it down pat, baby. Yeah, I'm ready. All right, we back. Play a T, that's me. Hollywood in the hood. Yeah, we got a really, really great show tonight with a returning guest on tonight. Really proud of this guy. I'm glad he's still doing his thing. We're gonna remind you who that is in just a minute. You know, I want to say thank you out there to the people in the world. You know, y'all calling us, y'all emailing us, y'all texting us, y'all FaceTiming, Facebook at night. Yeah, I mean, y'all blowing up the phones and I might be with a nice one. And they think it's something going on, but y'all sending me links to the stuff that's going on in the world. I bring it up. And when I bring this stuff up, y'all swear I'm making it up. Shador, man, man, I'm kind of like, I don't know what's going on with the Browns. I'm kind of getting mad, but then again, I love his attitude. If you hear the young man speak, he says, "I'm just waiting my turn." Yeah, you know, "I'm getting whatever reps I can with who I can and I'm just waiting my turn." And mastering my craft. I didn't do the best of jobs with I... And we did, we thought he did a damn good job in that preseason game. But he said he did an okay job. So, you know, he's, he got a real humble spirit. But now here we go, he's still fourth on the depth chart. You know, still fourth. And Kenny Pickett ain't even played none during the preseason. I thought if you get hurt and don't get played none, you go down the depth chart. That's what I thought, you know, but for the simple fact, he want a ring on a team that he really didn't really play much. You know, and he was a first round, I believe he was a first round pick at one point. You know, so they want to give him this opportunity. But, but my thing is, why y'all even draft homeboy then? I figured it out. Because you get to promote the new stadium. The Brown, the clowns. No, I ain't gonna diss y'all like that because I do be trying to get up to Maria and holla at y'all. But I'm just frustrated. I'm a Browns fan that's frustrated. When we gonna see number 12? Now, they say he might play in his final preseason game tomorrow. You know, get a few reps, but that's the last we're gonna see him unless Joe Flacco get hurt and unless they, DG throw mad interceptions, you know, then you, we might see Shador. Yeah, they, that's gonna be a whole thing, whole season thing, but here's... The backup quarterback? Yeah, that's, that's what we all unofficially think, you know. But here's the thing, Kenny Pickett is back at practice, so he's gonna get some run. Joe Flacco, they, coach already say the starter's gonna get some run. So Joe Flacco getting run, Kenny Pickett getting run, Dylan Gabriel tomorrow. Oh yeah, no, they ruled Kenny Pickett out. You're right, my bad. False information. No, you're right. Thank you, Miles. You're right. They ruled Kenny Pickett out. You're right. No, but see, that's why the president got advisors and then they huddle up and then they get it right. You know, we just had to go huddle live, you know what I'm saying? I'm frustrated. You all want to see Shador, man? The dude's so humble, man, I love his... They tried to playing though, you know, when he came out, he had a bad attitude. That's why he slipped, you know? He's not thinking about football, he's thinking about indoors. No, he's been straight up the, the consummate professional. And he's been working on his craft. So, you know, I just had, I, I just want to see dude play. I, I hope he makes the team, which I believe he will. Because if, at the very least, he's, he's a jersey seller and he's a promoter of the new stadium. So he's not going nowhere for the rest of the season. But I do want to hear, see him play. But we got a really great show tonight. We got a guy that's near and dear to the city. Near and dear to this Ward Nine in this community of Glenville. You know, he's an opponent, I mean, he's a candidate for Cleveland City Council, which means he's an opponent of the incumbent councilman Kevin Conwell. So, you know, we gave Elena and Tony Evans, Elena Bell and Tony Evans, a shot. We had a, if you all didn't know, we had a, a candidate's panel discussion. So anybody here in Cleveland that lives in Ward Nine, lives and works here in Ward Nine or traveled through the, the city of Cleveland, if you're interested in that Cleveland City Council race, you might want to watch that video of the candidate's panel discussion. We didn't have Randy on. I, I gotta ask Randy why that didn't happen. You know, I didn't run into Randy until afterwards. Maybe that's the big reason. He didn't probably know anything about it. But we, we're glad to have him on now, so that's a mute point. You know, so that's who we got on tonight, Mr. Randy Willis in the house tonight. You know what I mean? So we're gonna take a quick break and we'll be right back in a minute. Play a T, that's me. Hollywood in the hood. Yeah, all right, we back. Play a T, that's me. Hollywood in the hood. And yo, y'all don't know, we just called up recently with the Democratic candidate for governor, Ms., Dr. Amy Acton. If y'all don't know Dr. Amy Acton, she's a physician and a lawyer. But you know, one thing about her story that we found intriguing at, you know, Hollywood in the hood and Superior Renaissance was that she was homeless at one point and abused. You know, so she kind of know what's going on with the common folk. It would seem, it would seem that, that she would, you know? So, you know, we, you know, want to give her campaign a listening ear. And to that effect, we did. I caught up with her. Y'all gonna see that footage in just a moment. It'll be up. You know, that was a great thing, catching up with that. We was just out in Akron, in AK, at House 330. You know, that's LeBron James Family Foundation House. We're going to be having our first annual Superior Renaissance Gala White Carpet Event, March 14th, 2026. So you can RSVP your spot with us. You know, hit the numbers up, 440-691-7868. Reserve your spot right there. That's gonna be a great look. You're gonna want to attend that. When we's out there, we got treated like royalty. You know, we caught up with Seon Cotton, you know, he graduated and won the championship with LeBron at St. Vincent, St. Mary. We call up with Willie McGee, that's another, one of LeBron's best friends that he won the championship with him. And you know, so that was a great thing. We had a dinner at Bow's Restaurant, you know, so that was a great thing. And we locked that business in. So let me tell you, they got it going on down there too, man, you know, at the, at the House 330. When you go in there, it's, it's like different shops. You know, it's restaurants, it's, you could buy LeBron James paraphernalia, like all his tennis shoes, all his gear. And all, anything you buy out of there, whether it's food, merchandise, clothes, whatever, it all supports the LeBron James Family Foundation. But I'm gonna tell you, you gotta bring some bread when you go, baby. You gotta, because ain't nothing less than a hundred dollars. Ain't nothing less than, a shirt is a hundred dollars, you know? But, you know, it's for a good... But here's the thing, when he says, "We are a family," and this is the reason why I'm bringing it up. When he says, "We are a family," that's what he really portrays in, in his venues. Because everybody that works at the House 330, whether it's the Starbucks, Starbucks in there, the cabaret that's in there, the pizza shops that's in there, the paraphernalia shops, they're all ran by students from I Promise School and faculty members who got a second job there. You know, well, I mean, you know, his memorabilia, should I say that? Paraphernalia is a strange word to use. His memorabilia, his memorabilia. No smoke stop in House 330. You know, let's just get that straight. You know, you know, LeBron about taking care of his body. He ain't gonna have no mixed messages like that anyway. You know what I mean? But you go in there, it's, it's, it's straight up legit. And, but like I said, it's like a family atmosphere because he takes care of the employees. He has a credit union right across the street for his employees. And aside the building, employees, you can go there and get free food to eat when you hungry. You, you got a little mini laundromat, you wash your clothes for free. Get your hair cut, you got a barber shop. This for the employees. Yo, we are family, yeah. We went to I Promise School too. It was a family too. They, it was, you know, the kids back at school, so it was like, play a T with y'all, get, get. Oh, y'all just want to look around. Okay, cool. You know what I mean? But okay, all right, y'all over with y'all cool? Y'all took pictures, y'all cool? All right, because it's cool, it's cool going on, you know? We really educating, you know? We ain't just slam dunking. You know what I mean? But no, we got a really great show. I just want to bring that up because it'd be a great segue because we into politics tonight. We got, like I said at the outset of the show, we got a son of Cleveland that's been in politics for as long as we can remember. He's been a champion of the people. He's been stomping the grounds for a minute. He's a candidate for Cleveland City Council. Tonight I have Mr. Randy Willis with us. Yeah, my dudes and them getting hip to Nas. Yeah, yeah, I feel good. I feel good, you know? What's up, Randy?
Not much, man, not much. What's going on with you?
Man, we, we might have to jump over a few people heads, man. We not getting no help with the Superior Renaissance, man. You know, the Superior Renaissance, the Community Development Corporation, are you hip?
Yeah, I'm very hip. Recently I have been looked over, the paperwork. I was introduced to your process and your future plans. And to me, in my opinion, it's one of the most successful, well thought out, ready to be implemented plans I done seen in recent history.
Yeah, I gotta agree, man. And coming from your mouth, those are tremendous words because you're a historian.
Try to be, try to be.
You know, a researcher.
Yeah, well, definitely.
Is that still the case?
Yes, it is. With most of us, usually when we talk, we have to back our things up with data. So I learned that early on. So I got to digging and got to looking and I got a great education, but yeah, you have to have facts.
Now Randy, if I'm not mistaken, you ran for Cleveland City Council before?
Yes.
And of course, we know the outcome because Kevin is still the, the councilman. How did you fare in that race, if you recall?
I think it was a difference of maybe a thousand votes, I think, if I remember correctly.
A difference of a thousand? Are you telling me it was that close?
It was that close. Twenty-five years. Well, the people are waking up. They, they get up every day. They take the kids to school. We're life and life. We're living our lives and we see what's around us. And it's not to the standards that historically our neighborhood has been up to.
Why do you think that thousand votes made a difference? What was in your, what was it about, about your campaign that you learned from back then that you feel that you could fare much better now?
Well, I think that a lot of his support comes from the high risers.
The high rise, like the elderly?
Yeah, the elderly, disabled.
That's what you mean by high rises?
Yeah.
Because that's new slang. I don't want y'all, they all came up with that. That's a good one too.
It's a high rise.
That's a good respectful word, the high risers. You know, instead of saying them old folks or mentally, you know, the high risers.
Well, you know, now we have all types. We got people disabled as young as twenty-two that's living in those buildings. And then they got seniors all the way up to, you know, eighty or ninety years old.
Okay, I see.
There's a variety in those buildings. So I just call them high risers. When you have a captive audience like that, and I'm talking to the residents, they feel like their livelihood is controlled by the situation. They're very hesitant to cause any problems with their residency.
Now, am I, I'm being, is there some more to issue with your name on the ballot or?
No, what happened was when we first started campaigning, we had some technical issues and we missed the deadline. So we had to take an alternative route as in being a write-in candidate.
As being a write-in candidate?
You have to actually write my name on the ballot.
Now honestly, has your campaign, to me, it hasn't. You haven't lost in any favor, nonetheless?
It's a righteous mission. I mean, we, me and you, we grew up in that hood.
Because honestly, that's a difficult task.
Yeah.
You know, if you're not on the ballot, it's like, in some people's mind, when you're on the ballot, that lends legitimacy to your campaign.
Right.
But just because you're a write-in doesn't mean you have any less legitimacy. You know? You're a write-in, you know? Hey, I'm there too. You know, what it means is you gotta do more observation. You gotta do more research into the person's politics.
Right.
Well, at least that's what I would offer you to do. Because just because Randy's a write-in, I know Randy for quite some time. You might want to study his politics. Because he's a champion for the people.
Well, I think, you know, by me being a man of God, I started off as a preacher when I was in my early twenties.
A street preacher?
Yes, I used to get on the corner with a little loud, speaking with my, my, my children. And we was to tell people about God. I come from a very religious family. Education was paramount as well as respecting God. And it's taken me a long way in life. So yeah, I got, that's how I really first got into politics, preaching on the street corner. I kind of hooked up with a council person. They asked me to back them. I said I would if they were championing a trade school down here. So for about thirteen years, I've been championing for the east side. We have one on the west side. They just built it. I think it's somewhere around in the forty million dollar range. And I wanted one on the near east side where we could, you know, let our residents...
Man, them trade schools, let me tell you, because where I graduated from, East Tech was a trade school.
Right.
And man, you know, I wish more of our young brothers and sisters would have took advantage of them. You know, we was really just kicking it in school, you know? Hey, yeah, what's going on with the party tonight? You know, roll something up, throw something back, you know? But they were teaching welding.
Yes.
You know, imagine if you had them skills right now. You wouldn't be out there bumming for change like you was when I seen you out there earlier.
Thirty-four welders, the pay scale is anywhere from somewhere around thirty-five thousand all the way up into the low hundreds.
They had auto mechanic, auto techs. You know, they had this there at East Tech, you know?
Auto mechanics, the average labor price per hour now is a hundred dollars.
Researcher, man. Research, see, see, that's what I love about Randy, man. And you know what? Hold on, Randy, you know, that's what some people take issue with is your, 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 prowess to do that, to do research and pull the numbers out.
Right.
You think, you think you've made enemies like that or you know, there's nothing to care about?
Quite, yes. But you have to address a problem. You have to understand the factors that's in the problem. If you don't know what the factors are in the problem, how could you ever solve it? One plus what equals what? You know what I'm saying? So you have to kind of get your head around what the problem is. And that's what led into the research. And then when I started doing the research, I got a good view of what the problem is. I have a good understanding of what it's going to take to change that problem. And I also have come, in my heart, came to the conclusion of why it's happening.
Well, let's start right there. In your mind, in your heart of hearts, what's been the biggest obstacle of success for this ward? Other than just saying, you know, Kevin Conwell, what's?
The, the count, from my research, the linchpin in any development, any, in any community is your leader. And for right now, the council person is the closest governmental leader that we have in our community. And if they don't have foresight, if they don't do planning, if they don't do analysis of the current situation, whether you're progressing or regressing, we get what we've got. We got twenty-five years of being in office in our community now is in worse shape than it's ever been. Economically, socially, the mental health crisis out here in the streets in our neighborhood is appalling. And it's a lot of factors that needed to be addressed a long time ago.
Well, hold on, Randy, I just had your opposition on, Mr. Kevin Conwell.
Yes.
And to his point, he's brought over seventy-plus million dollars of development to the ward. You know, so when you say these things, that's nothing to balk at.
Well, I'll say this, we have a billion-dollar corporation in Cleveland Clinic, but that doesn't mean me and you have a million dollars in our pocket.
Yeah.
A lot of people have been making tremendous amounts of profit and the community as a whole has declined. And I, I think that's unacceptable.
You got, you got a, a high rise going up right here on one hundred eleventh Superior that's gonna be dealing with mentally, you know, unstable people and elders. You got the Hitchcock for Women and Children Center. You got VA establishments built. What do you say to those things in the community?
I did research in the last campaign. We had over almost, I'd say about four billion dollars worth of new development and construction program, projects that were going on back then and coming to our neighborhood. Out of all that money, when I went out and did research and took pictures, I seen New York license plates, I see Iowa, I seen California, I seen New Jersey. If those projects are here and they don't help the people that is in that community, what good is it? That's like going window shopping at Macy's. Yeah, I can go in and look at Gucci all day long, but if I don't have the resources in my pocket to obtain that, it's just basically wishing and dreaming. And that's what is prevalent in our community. A lot of resources come, and they have been coming since nineteen sixty-eight in the riots after Martin Luther King was killed. But we haven't seen any progress going on in the community when you walk these streets. You don't see any increase in minority business ownership.
Are you, are you say, are you saying, because you said there's money flowing?
Yes.
Since the sixties?
Yes.
Are you saying money is being mismanaged?
Yes. I think it's being mismanaged and purposely being directed into projects and things that don't benefit the community on a whole.
In your mind, for what reason?
Well, to be completely honest, we, this, Glenville is set right in the middle of what they used to call the Gold Coast. This is one of the most valuable pieces of real estate in America. We have the largest, second largest freshwater body of water in the world with Lake Erie. The only other one bigger is Antarctica and that's frozen. Every industrial process needs water. We're the second best location for wind power in the country. That was done by Jimmy Demora and the Russos when they were in office. Those studies were done. It's a lot of things that we could use to benefit our people for our schools and having cooking programs where we can feed the homeless. Matter of fact, you know, doing a, a big push on mental health, getting vans and trailers out here and really going to the people and dealing with that and getting our, our community in position to move forward. I don't see any of that planning going on.
Well, you know, they're saying with Elena Bell and Tony Evans Jr. joining the race along with yourself, the, they anticipate votes being taken away from Conwell, but they're not quite sure if it's enough to ouster him from office. You know, and if you were to actually get into office, what have you identified in the city that's of most distress to you, whether it's in this ward or not, that you want to address like right off the bat if you were to be elected into office?
Getting, first of all, well, it's two. The cleanliness problem is a problem for me because to me, that makes the training of our youth so much difficult. When they're not proud of where they stay and go to school and live and eat, it has a major effect on their psychology.
Yeah.
You know?
I drive down the street and I see that, you know, the, the, you know, the fast food containers on the ground and that's a little discouraging, man. Like you couldn't just hold up and get a little closer and toss it in the trash can. It's, it's got to go right there, why? Because you just don't care, huh?
But that goes...
You're just so mad, you out of work? You so mad the stamps ain't come in on time? You so mad somebody hit a lick on you? You so mad, man?
But that's, that goes to what you were saying about Conwell said, how much millions he brung to the community?
Seventy plus.
Seventy plus, but you couldn't even get the streets cleaned? You couldn't, out of that seventy plus, you couldn't pull a little money to a side to have a cleaning crew out here making sure that what we're representing is excellence?
Hold on, to that, to that effect, you know, Randy, I gotta say, that's where the... that's where the Superior Renaissance stepped in, big shout to Mr. Corey Wooton, you know, for establishing, in the Superior Renaissance, for establishing the Superior Clean Team.
Right.
And for the past couple of weeks, every other Saturday, I want to say, you know, we've been out here cleaning up the community from a hundred and five, small sample size, from a hundred and five to a hundred and twenty-fifth, but it made a big difference because when you drive down in that area and that community is clean like that, it makes you, it sets the example.
Exactly.
When we out there, people come out there, they be like, oh, man, and, oh, man, I'm bringing my weed whacker next weekend, I'mma join y'all. You know, it enthuses people.
Just imagine, no, that's good. Just imagine if you were a developer or investor.
Yeah, and you come down in the area and it's clean.
Come on, so that automatically puts you one or two levels below other places because the amount of cleanup that they would have to do. I think that's one of the basic things that you're going to have to do off the rip. Cleanliness of your area has to be a priority. The second most.
Of course, you got a plan for where the money's going to come from.
Well, that's negotiation. If you want a project in my community, we're going to take one or two percent of this project.
Ah, go ahead, Randy.
We're going to reinvest back into the community.
Yeah, fund these Superior Clean Teams and such.
It's a win-win, a fair exchange, it's no robbery. But we're so used to getting like ninety-ten splits, you know, ninety-five-five splits, and that's not going to propel us into the future and where Cleveland is going to.
You sound like Mr. Donald Trump, yeah, you know, let's increase the budget of NATO, raise it from two percent to five percent. You know what I'm saying, yeah?
Hey, man, I don't know if that's a compliment or a diss on the side, yeah, I don't know, man, but, but I love you.
If you Ukraine, that's a compliment. If you Ukraine, if you Ukrainian, that's a compliment.
But in that same vein, we've talked over the years.
Yes.
We were younger men back then when we talked, but we had dreams and aspirations.
I'm still a player with it, but go ahead.
Always, player T, always.
Okay.
But as we get older, we see that our vision changes.
Yes, sir.
Maybe when we were younger, we thought about a car.
Yes, sir.
At the point and stage where we are in life, now we're thinking about a home.
Yes, sir.
You see what I'm saying, we're looking about our long-term growth. I think that here in Glenville, that hasn't been addressed. The things that are being put in.
Home ownership?
Oh, it has to be the backbone of your community. There have to be a stakeholder, isn't that the word we use all the time, stakeholder, stakeholder? Yeah, you have to have ownership and an ability to progress in your community. Once, if that gets stagnated in any way, your community's going to decline. But that's why Kevin invested so much money in University Circle. University Circle at one point in time used to be the armpit of Glenville. It used to be Drug Alley, Prostitution Row. But the hospitals and the residents of that area got together, pulled the councilmen in, and whatever they did, or however they got him to do it, he heavily invested in renewing Little Italy and University Circle. And now they're gems of the Glenville neighborhood.
Well, I'mma say this, you know, all you people that point fingers, you know, you better start unifying, you better start working together and putting people like Randy, that's got your interests at heart, into position to bring your vision to fruition or else you're going to continue to point fingers. You know, that was one of the things that Kevin Conwell, his main thing when he pulls me to the side is T, man, they're not coming to the meetings, meaning the people in the community where these decisions are being, you know, where the people where these decisions are being affected, they're not showing up to the meetings. And you got to know, special interests are leaning on these people.
Passing out money, passing out checks, contribution.
And so, you know, if we don't put their feet to the fire, they're going to do what the special interests paid them to do. We're going to take a quick break, Randy.
No problem.
We'll be right back in a minute with Mr. Randy Willis. Pardon me one second, goodbye. Yeah, I'm affiliated with the Hustlers, and so I made it. You know what I mean? Play a T, that's me, Hollywood in the hood. I'm right here with Mr. Randy Willis, candidate for Cleveland City Council. Now, now Randy, you know, you're up against a mammoth in office. At least that's what we think, you know?
Right.
But, you know, this whole time, every time he's ran, he's, you know, he's got a lower percentage of the vote, which shows there's displeasure there. Now, you brought up to me candidly, uh, off air, Carl Stokes, which if anybody know, if you're not in the know, Carl Stokes was the first black mayor of Cleveland, Ohio. Very influential. Uh, he was a mayor in the seventies, right?
Yep.
Very influential and spurred a lot of, uh, a lot of change in the city, you know? You admire Carl Stokes, why is that?
Um, because once I started talking to the older residents in the neighborhood, they told me to do research on Carl because of a lot of things that I was bringing up about that wasn't going on in the neighborhood, the direction we weren't going, they told me that Carl was saying the same things happened to him. And he had kinda wrote in his autobiography and his book, The Promise of Power, basically he just gave us a roadmap to our destruction of our neighborhood. He said how our political power would be diluted, how they wouldn't truly invest in the neighborhoods with nothing that would be substantial on keeping our progress growing or achieving new levels. I mean, the man was in there. He was one of the most powerful people, um, in the country at one time. So when I read his books and I got his insights, I started doing the research, and sure enough, everything he said was proven right. And I just can't understand how we're, we had somebody, a leader like that here in Cleveland, and we're at the point now where we're being satisfied with people who don't even keep the streets clean. Safety is an issue.
What's been, uh, a detriment to your success in the office, to, uh, as far as being elected, do you think in your mind? What's been your biggest obstacle?
Um, well, like I said earlier, we were younger men, and now we're older men. The one thing that we learned is fluff from substantial things. Um, a lot of people get caught up with the look or the presentation and don't look at the substance of things.
True!
And every job I ever had, I had to produce. I had to somehow help increase that owner's profit in order to keep getting my job and getting my paycheck.
Yeah, yeah.
And that dynamic has been flipped on its head in our community.
You calling off?
Because, exactly. And that's what I'm saying. You have to have some kind of way of gauging progress. And what I'm seeing, the murder rate is high, the crime rate is high, the, um...
That doesn't reflect well on Mr. Conwell.
Home ownership is down, but the investors' ownership...
Hold on, and you can prove this type of stuff, Randy?
Yes, yes, I can show you those numbers.
So if anybody that was interested in your politics, they could reach out to you with his website?
Yeah, um, Willis4Councilman Instagram. Basically, I'm putting all the information up there, so anybody that wants to go behind me or check the numbers or anything, you can just go to Instagram and check that out, and it's right there for you. Yeah, so...
One second. Okay.
See, I think, you know what, just to be blatantly honest, you said that, you know, we're going up against a behemoth. But me, by me being a man of God, I also ran the story of David and Goliath.
I knew you were gonna go there.
When your cause is righteous
Huh!
And you stand on the truth, victory has to someday be yours.
Yeah.
So I believe that over time, people heard what I said. Maybe they didn't believe me. Over time, they start seeing the things that I'm talking about transpire, I think the support grows and grows. We're at a point now in our community where we know we're either gonna slide down into the abyss, or we're gonna grow our way out of this.
Name one thing you're proud about in the city.
The people.
That's cliche, Randy. What about the people?
Well, I'll put it to you like this. Anything that I want done or know about is somebody in my neighborhood that has that knowledge. Somebody. Nursing, banking, I met an older gentleman, he told me that his father was the one that laid out the Conrail rail yards right there at 152nd in Waterloo. He said his father, um, had like a third grade education, and that he really couldn't write, and he laid that, um, that rail yard out. He hasn't had a late train in 20 years, he said. His father never had any accidents or any major problems at that yard. And, um, if you met the man or seen the man, you would never believe that he was capable of doing that. But I've learned over the years to never judge a book by its cover. We have so much talent here, we have so much knowledge, it's just being, um, pointed in the wrong directions. We need somebody to help focus that back. A councilman has to be a cheerleader. He has to give the people a reason to feel like things are gonna get better. Conwell, in my opinion, is lacking in that. We don't see him, we see him at events, and then we don't see any follow-up.
Hold on, Randy, because I see, I see him out in the community, and I'm not, uh, I'm not defending him.
Mm-hmm, I know.
I'm speaking truth to truth. I, I see him canvass the neighborhood of his ward pretty often.
Uh, yeah, election.
From end to end.
Election time, with most of his politicians in Cleveland.
Election time, uh...
You see him at six months before them four years start, and then after four years, it's kinda hard to catch up with him.
You let him tell you, you can see a merry Wednesday at Wade Oval, and I'm gonna tell you something, I'm, that's one thing I'm proud about the city is Wade Oval. That's like, it's become, uh, you know, if any, if you know about Wade Oval, that's where all the museums at in Wade Park, and it's a big, like, you know, gathering every, every Wednesday, where they have live entertainment and different things, and they have vendors, and I just don't like it when all the colors of the rainbows get together and try to persuade my youth to be colors of the rainbows. You know, I get the inclusivity of the community, so that's why I call it a bright spot, and I'm proud of that.
And that's true, but you can go a mile and a...
And that's in the Lord of Nine, and that's Kevin Conwell.
You, you can go one mile, a mile and a half down the street, and you'll see a dead body on the street.
Huh! See, Randy gotta sort it up like that.
Yeah.
And that's kinda true, you could, you could kick it over there at Wade Oval.
Yeah, be safe.
But you slide over there in Superior, you might see somebody burnt up in the alley like that over there.
Let's talk about the incident at Save-A-Lot. The young lady who got shot at Save-A-Lot when the stores robbed, about a week and a half ago.
You all heard about that? Somebody at Save-A-Lot, somebody got...
It's been swept under the rug.
Well, so much activity going on in Save-A-Lot parking lot, I, I ain't, I ain't...
But isn't that tragic, though?
Yeah.
That one mile away, you can have a good time, don't worry about being shot, robbed, or having a problem, and then a mile and a half, you have to keep your head on a swivel.
Well, Randy, how, what do you propose to, to, and that's a loaded question, and you'll have to go all night to try to answer that, but then, uh, how would you even begin to address something like that?
Well, the government went through this before, it's called...
Without bringing in the National Guard?
No, no, we don't have, you have to give people hope. As a preacher, that's my job. My job is to be the cheerleader when, when, when all is lost. I still have to have faith that somehow, some way, God is gonna bring us through. And I believe from just past history that we, we built the community into a place that they call the Gold Coast. I believe with our talent and our youth, we can do it again. The technology, we have these phones, we, we have laptop computers, we, we have everything at our disposal that we can change the world, not even getting up out of this chair. Why aren't we doing it? You, like you said, Wade Oval, everything is great. You come right down the hill, the, the, the school grading is bad, um, the crime, the homelessness, the, um, the homeless people down here on Superior taking over whole apartment buildings, you know?
The gay gangs downtown.
Well, well...
Yeah.
We have to get to a point where we start investing in us. And that's what I'm gonna say i- in closing with you. I've always admired how you always had the courage and the foresight to invest in yourself. That's why Hollywood in the Hood has been here so long. That's why your reach is so deep. We just need that in political office. We need somebody that's willing to put their name and their effort and everything on the line to get results. That's all we want. It's not personal. I don't have anything personally against him. I'm dealing with the fact that I'm raising my children in this community. I didn't raise one set, they're grown. I have a five-year-old that's starting kindergarten two days ago, and I don't like the atmosphere, because it wasn't like this when we were coming up.
Well, Randy, when, when you first go around, and it didn't, you didn't achieve the results you wanted, what did you end up doing in the arena of politics outside of being in the office? Because that's what people wanna know, like, okay, you didn't make it in the office, but what did you do? Did you point fingers? Did you sit back and say, oh, Conwell, you know, you ain't, you know? What happened? What did you do?
Well, you can go back in my past history, since, I think it was in 96, um, there was a new, big newspaper article where I was out filming some real estate in the community, because really that's what my passion is, is in development. And, um, I happened to film some, some Cleveland vice cops planting some drugs on some young folks. And they pulled their guns on me, and it went into a long other thing, but I've been out here fighting for the people since the early nineties. And the problem is not the people, it's the problem that we don't have access to the resources and the mentoring that other places do.
Right, I, I agree with that. And that's no small potatoes, that's very important.
And to answer your other part of that question, far as being a politician, I'm not. I was a preacher, I'm gonna give you a quick two-minute story to tell you how all this got started.
Ever since Donald Trump said it, everybody running with that now. I ain't apologizing. What the hell are you? You on the ballot, or you're writing?
I was a street preacher who got recruited by a councilperson who promised me that they were gonna build a trade school.
Okay.
Two years later, the people I got out here to help mobilize to get her in office came to me and said, well, where's the trade school? I kept going back, this went on for three years. The third year, the people came and said, if you don't run against them, we know you was in on it and bamboozled on us.
Wow, that's the feedback you were getting from the community?
And as a representative of God, I couldn't let that sting.
Right.
So I had to keep fighting to rehab my name, that no, I've always been for the people, I represent God, and all we wanted out of this, when we talked, the young folks, was a trade school, because they wanna earn money. They wanna have pride in living. They wanna have their own, they wanna have their own place.
Now, you just brought up a good point. You said you were a preacher, and you had your family with you, and you'd be out there with the bullhorn, which means you galvanized people in your community.
Right.
To the point where community leaders came to you for your help.
Right.
But then they were disingenuous and didn't stand by, by you. Okay, what do you learn, what, what do you learn that we could pass on to the community now, so we don't continue to repeat them same mistakes?
A person who doesn't stand by their word is not worthy of your time. If you, if you, if your word means nothing, there's nothing that you can invest or do for that person that's gonna ever come to something.
You know what? Superior Renaissance, they came up with a remedy. You know, they then came up where they're gonna educate their mass and their body to the power of, uh, when you remove somebody from office.
Recall.
Recall.
Recall petition.
Recall, yeah. They're, 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 they're getting, they're, uh, building up right now to really bring that to the forefront of the group.
Educate the people.
Educate the members of the Superior Renaissance, to be able to use that as an effective tool.
Right.
When stuff don't happen right. You, do you believe in unity like that?
I did, definitely, yes. And, um, I'm glad that you brought that up, because I was kinda debating that. I have that information, I, I acquired that information along the way, and I do believe that that would be a very powerful tool in the residents' hands to deal with politicians or political people who don't keep their word.
Yeah, and see, you know what, Randy, I'm thinking, man, because, you know, you are, you have been a champion, regardless of the fact you hadn't been in office.
Right.
So, you know, just period, you know, your body and knowledge should be helpful to the people in this city, in this community.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, like I said, I was very impressed with, um, Superior Renaissance and their planning. To me, that's what made my heart leap and made me have more enthusiasm in the campaign, because people are now getting it.
Well, when you came across the Superior Renaissance and their plans and vision, did it remind you of anything that you had picked up on, that, that could serve well in what you picked up on in Carl Stokes' Promise of Power? You know, could, could it help defeat some of those things he'd been forecasting? Do you believe some of those principles of the Superior Renaissance could do that? Or, and do, and any, any movements that you have in mind, do you think you can address those things?
No, I think Superior Renaissance is an excellent example of people going to acquire knowledge and bringing it back to the community, so people can actually feel, taste, and touch the results of their actions. And, um, Carl was very emphatic that we had to, um, train, educate, and support the youth. Because a lot of the reason why he got into office was because of that young, black youthful vote.
Have you thought about that a lot? And your candidacy, what you would do with the youth? Because you said one of your main things would be to address cleaning up the community, because before, in your words, is before anybody, the youth or anybody could do anything, they gotta feel good about where they live.
Right. Well, I, I believe that with all the, like you said, millions and millions of investment that has been done in the community over the last 10 years, we're gonna have to some kind of way integrate the youth into that. We have these facilities here, but we as residents...
Have you thought about that?
Oh, yes.
Any, any kind of thing you're gonna implement with the youth?
We, we should have, we should sit down and have a roundtable with the top 50 companies here in Cleveland. And we need to spend a weekend, and we need to hammer out what their, what their needs for employment going into the future is, and how we can better facilitate and get that workforce ready for them to bring in those profits, which is gonna benefit the neighborhood.
That's a grand idea. That's a grand idea.
I believe that with the way that, in, us being one of the tech leaders in the country with NASA
Yeah.
That we could definitely do some kind of partnership with them and bring and incite the youth to, to...
Hold that thought, Randy, hold that, we're gonna take a quick break.
No problem.
We'll be right back. All right, we back. Play a T, that's me, Hollywood in the hood. Listen, if you feeling what we're doing, and you wanna be a part of something, you wanna support, you can come down there, the Hollywood in the hood, and Superior Renaissance, and lend your expertise, your vision, you know, or you can help us out in monetary kind, you know, that's by making a donation to the platform, any amount, large or small, it all helps to keep shining a light on the stars that we are, know, love, and aspire to be. So I'm gonna thank you all in advance, you know, straight up and down. I'm gonna remind you that we're gonna be having the Superior Renaissance, uh, First Annual Gala White Carpet Event happening, uh, Saturday, March 14th in Akron at House 330, that's LeBron James Family Foundation, um, historic House 330. So, you know, you might wanna RSVP, um, with us, so hit the numbers up, uh, 440-691-7868. I'm right here, right now, with Mr. Randy Willis. He's a candidate for Cleveland City Council up against Elena Bell, Tony Evans Jr., and the incumbent Kevin Conwell. Now, real quick, Randy, I know you have to go, um, tell us how your candidacy stands out between those three.
Um, I have the experience, I have a plan, I understand the factors and the dynamics of how we got here, uh, what we need to do to stop that dynamic and flip it around 180 degrees, and use that to propel us forward. Yes, we've been neglected, yes, we haven't been developed, that gives us a great opportunity to move forward and do that. Um, the country right now is in a very transitional period. Um, in our community, things that needed to be done a long time ago weren't, but we're at the best time ever to get those things, uh, accomplished. Uh, we have too many institutions that are growing that can be partnered with to turn around the problems and issues that we're having. We had, I wanna address one more thing before we leave. The youth, it's an anger building in the youth. They're being told that being successful is right at their grasp, they could do it, all they have to do is just get up and go do it. And that, when they get out here to try to find out how to do it, there's no information process, there's no institution, um, there's no rites of passage in our neighborhood from poverty to wealth. And, um, they're kinda mad, they're upset, and I wanna definitely leave a message for y'all. Through God, we can do all things. All you have to do is stay focused, get behind people that's behind you, and have a plan. Anybody who doesn't have a plan does not have your future interests at heart. Um, I believe that we're ripe for, um, if we would have some kind of mass project where we could build something like a, a entrepreneurial park for youth, for the young. We need to have something, um, in our neighborhood what Ted Ginn is doing over there at Glenville. People who go to Glenville know that if they're in sports, they're gonna do very successful because of the work that he has done. We need to have business and entrepreneurial-type institutions doing that. That's why I'm fully behind what Superior Renaissance is doing. I think the plan that they're, um, trying to achieve is great, they just need a councilman that's gonna run interference for them, give them cover, and make sure that they're funded, and let them do what they do. And those gonna spring out other institutions and other places and businesses that's gonna help us accomplish moving into the future.
Well, if somebody, um, wanted to support your campaign, your candidacy, tell them how to get in touch with you.
Well, my name is Randy Willis, my phone number is 216-820-3246. At this point in time, I'm not really taking financial contributions. Um, I think that this race is gonna come down to, uh, looking people in the eye, and them people judging you trustworthy to be put in charge, to make sure that their future is gonna change from what they're getting now. So that doesn't really take money, that takes effort. So I believe that between prayer, I need y'all prayer, please pray for me, that God's will be done, and we can turn things around in our community, and word of mouth.
I, I, real quick, I noticed you got your young daughter here with you in support. Do you think you have the support of the youth?
Yes, because right...
Why are you so confident?
Because I'm out there every day, talking to them every day. And they're, they're seeing the success of other places like Dubai and different places, and they're wondering why they're being left out. I believe with the correct information, I'll give you an example. We just had a, a, a high-rise apartment building built right down here on Superior. Why, when that process was being done, why didn't we have mentors to take our youth and walk them through that process, so they can learn how to put up apartment buildings in our neighborhood? It's just a matter of paperwork and experience.
Great idea.
Yeah, so, um...
And that, that'd be the type of stuff you would champion if you were to be a...
From day one, from day one.
Thank you, Mr. Willis, appreciate you, man.
Play a T!
Randy Willis
The voice of the hood!
Gives you another, another option, so study the politics, go to the Instagram, like you say, and find out more, man. Play a T, that's me, Hollywood in the hood! Yeah! Hey, we're gonna take some pics real quick, no problem.